To bring this special town council meeting to order, it's March 12th at seven o'clock. We're in the town council chambers at 61 Echo Lake Road. Could we all stand for the pledge?
Let the allegiance be the fire of United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sue, could you call the roll? Here.
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 All right. Item four, Rob, would you like to?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
I move to approve the resolution regarding the Watertown High School HVAC project.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? No discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Abstained? Anybody abstaining? Okay. Go ahead, Rob.
I move to approve the resolution regarding the Swift Middle School HVAC project.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Item six.
I move to approve the resolution regarding the John Trumbo Primary School HVAC project.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. All right. Item seven. Jonathan.
For the fun part, we'll be starting with planning and zoning, zoning board of appeals and conservation commission. Pages five and six in your budget book.
Good evening, council members. Mark Masood, administrator for land use and building services on behalf of the land use and building services departments. Land use and building services consists of six full-time and one part-time employee plus an intern. Building services staff is responsible for ensuring safe construction of structures. Planning and zoning staff guides appropriate development and provide support to the planning and zoning commission, the conservation and inland wetlands agency, the zoning board of appeals and the historic district commission. Building services department issued 387 building permits, not including minor electrical and plumbing permits, and conducted sixteen hundred forty-two inspections last year. Planning and zoning issued 426 zoning permits, sixteen inland wetland permits and five special permits. The building highlights of the department, the building services e-permit system now has been online, receives at least sixty percent of its applications through the web portal, easing the burden of in-person applications. Building staff utilizes mobile devices to process applications and inspections in real time in the field. Zoning applications and permits issued are issued through the e-permit system. Our next goal is to, is for online acceptance of zoning applications as well to create a seamless online processing of zoning and building permits together. Next would be the online processing of applications from, for planning and zoning commission, conservation and the wetlands agency, zoning board of appeals and the historic district commission. Another highlight is, is ongoing zoning revisions. Zoning standards impact town growth and development in innumerable ways, primarily to provide for the orderly development of land within town, but also can be an impediment to desired growth and expansion. A myriad of conflicting standards drive numerous variance requests and create confusion in applications of, of those zoning standards. Our goal is to provide for orderly development, but also to improve the ease and reduce the cost of doing business with the town. A significant revision of zoning regulations, and I know you've heard me speak about this for, for a while, will be completed within, within months. There is also an integration of the e-per, of the municipality e-permit system with the Catalis service request system to provide a more efficient processing of, of applications and, and complaints or service requests with, with each, with each other. Literally, this would be the start page for the zoning regulations. It's a quick start guide. You would determine, one would determine your, the zone that you're in and the property address, and the regulations would guide you, whether it be a residential district, a business district or industrial district, to the, to the correct and proper information that you're seeking right off the bat, instead of going through, again, a very complex system of trying to figure out what it is, what information you're trying to get at in the, in the regulations. Our budget synopsis, we, we project revenue for the building services of $340,000. We project revenue for land use departments of $73,500. We're developing a revised fee schedule, which we hope to bring to you at some point to look at increase in revenue. The total expenses for the building services land use department is, is five, is proposed at $591,518. Notable increases include a request for a full-time assistant building official. We had one a short time ago during my, my tenure. We now operate with a part-time official, assistant official, who can only give us ten hours a week. You had recently increased or added benefits to the part-time package, but we still have a difficult time in attracting talent. It's a very competitive field for building officials, so the best, in order to provide the best service for the town, our request is to revert back to the full-time assistant building official. We have a shared plotter expense budget, which now includes supplies and maintenance. We have a request for a new land use vehicle. We've retired two obsolete vehicles. The, our remaining older vehicles are subject to, to frequent repair. The specifics of the, of the increases are as, are as follows. So, the assistant building official, we now spend $44,310 to, we would like to, again, have the full-time official, which would be, would, would take us to $70,981 for a 60.2% increase, the difference being $26,671. There is no previous basis for the new vehicle, so it's proposed at $10,000, spread out over a four-year period. The shared plotter would increase from $4,200 to $5,986 for a 42.5% increase, which means seven, $1,786. The intern, which has previously been slotted at $9,000, we're asking for a thousand dollar increase, eleven percent. Just to note, we've done very well with, with interns. They're a tremendous bang for the buck, so to speak, to the town. They provide invaluable service. We've had two or three interns that have gone on, they've all been local residents, Watertown residents, they've gone on to positions with the other, with the state and with other municipalities, so we're proud to, to give them training and to launch them into their careers, so to speak. Our overtime budget now includes IT support, so that's gone from $1,500 per year to $5,000 for a 233% increase, a total of $3,500. So, our total budget now is $541,636. The proposed budget that we request is $5,091,518 for a 9.2% increase and an overall $42,957 increase. Our goals for the next fiscal year are continued implementation of Watertown's vision, which is expressed in the plan, the 10-year plan of conservation and development, to continue to streamline the land use regulatory process, to fully implement the online e-permit system, as mentioned, to integrate, to fully integrate building and planning systems online for, for client ease of use, to complete the revision and edits to the town's zoning regulations, all toward the goal of assisting in increase to the value of the grand list and assisting the town in increasing its, its revenue, its revenue sources. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you.
First of all, thank you for that excellent presentation. It was really helpful, the way it was all laid out. I just wanted to see if I remember, if I've got my history correct. I believe when I first came on the council in 2019, that we had a full-time assistant building inspector, and then we went down to a part-time, is that correct?
That's, that's correct. When I first started in 2016, we had the, the full-time building official and a full-time assistant building official for, I guess I'll just leave it at for personnel reasons, and in the transition, it was decided that we could, the town could save money by going to a part-time building official, and that just, it worked for a while, but just hasn't worked at this point. As noted, the, so the 1,600 inspections now falls on the building official, so it's, it's quite a load, and the town is busy enough that really does need to have two full-time officials.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, sure.
Anyone else? The vehicle that's mentioned, is that just to go to different sites when you're doing the inspections, or does it have other purposes?
Yes, it would be just in-town use or for meetings, primarily just to, for, for any staff, whether it be building official or a land use, to, to visit the, to visit various sites around town and make their inspections.
And I also noticed in your budget, the software line item increased from $5,500 to about $10,000. Do you recall what that increase was?
I believe that includes partially the Catalis, the integration of the, of the Catalis service request system into the municipality e-permit system, which has generally been about six thousand, about $12,000, $6,000 for each, for each department.
And in your original budget request, you had $20,000 for the planet, plan of development, and then that was cut. What's the story behind that?
Yeah. The plan of conservation and development is a 10-year plan. It was last done in 2017, and I put that, I put that in there thinking that the town could start to accumulate money in the budget to pay for the, pay for the new plan when it comes due, because it is about a, probably this day and age is probably 50, 60, 70,000. But I was provided guidance that, that's not really an appropriate way to handle that item, so they just took that out, and I suppose we'll put that number in when it's, when it's due.
Thank you.
Yep.
Anyone else?
Just, just because, just for my clarification on the, on the budget, the assistant building official, it shows zero for, is that, is there, there's probably a reason for it, that's why I'm asking, on page seven, for, for the prior years?
So, we've had two line items. There has been the assistant building official, which has been blank for the past few years, but then we had the part-time building official also, and that line item had been.
Part-time building inspector?
Yes.
That's the same.
Yes.
I, I see.
Well, yes, I mean, one's the full-time, one's the full-time position, which hadn't been funded, which now we're, we're attempting to fund, and then the part-time, the part-time inspector was the vehicle for paying the part-time person.
Yeah, and then moving, transitioning from part-time to full-time, does that carry with it any additional, is that, that person, is they, are they part of the, were they part of the union for, for part-time work, or?
With benefits now, I believe they are.
Okay.
Just, I could clarify for that. So, we were in, in a partnership with Thomaston. We did have some limited benefits that were included in this program, so on the benefit side, there will be a slight increase, but not a full 100% as a brand-new employee. So, some of the things that we had agreed to were prorated time off. I'm not sure, he didn't take advantage of the insurance?
No. He got a stipend.
Okay, so we included a stipend.
And that was between Thomaston, I mean, I recall that that was that position? So, we're abandoning that idea, it didn't work?
It was successful while it worked. Thomaston ended up hiring a full-time position, and our part-time, who was excellent for us, actually found a full-time job in another town, which now we're back and we have a shared service with Woodbury, I believe, or a, a BO that is working in other towns. He will help us out on an interim basis.
Right. But there's no, there's no specific sharing in terms of the other municipalities. Our current ABO just works in other towns on his own.
Okay. Okay.
Which appears to be a common arrangement with, with building, with assistant building officials, and building officials as well.
Any other discussion? Gary?
How old are the, the vehicles now that you have? We have one or two?
We have two. We have two vehicles. Both hand, hand me down Ford Explorers. I think they're vintages about '06, '07. While they're kinda decent vehicles, they're subject to frequent repairs, and they do cost a fair amount of money to keep them on the road, so it's that, you know, that cost benefit analysis is whether you sink a lot of money into an older vehicle, whether, and whether you go for trying to get a newer vehicle, so that's our rationale.
Anyone else? Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have building inspection. That's the same, right?
Would you kind of just coordinate that finalization, that all your departments were kind of summarized in there? So, it's listed separately, the zoning board of appeals, conservation commission, and then building inspection.
Oh, oh, oh.
You did that all in one presentation?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Just clarify that for that.
Yes, yes. Sorry about that. Yes, the, the budgets, the smaller budgets for the conservation commission, for the zoning board of appeals, for the, for the historic district commission are, are really remain, remain flat. They include separate line items for, you know, for printing, for advertising. I've actually advocated for maybe a more, in the future, to combine some of those line items, because, again, you've got all these, these separate line items, which I think could get a little confusing and a little redundant over, over time, but I think that, I think the folks like to see the, the separate categories and see what's being spent in each, in each different, for each of those different commissions. So, that's the way it's been set up, and we've, we just continue that process. And I believe that, you know, except for, so in planning and zoning, we, we put most of the major categories, budget categories, but the other, the other line items remain pretty, pretty flat and pretty consistent, you know, over time. And then we monitor them over the course of the year to see whether there's, you know, needs to be an increase or actually a decrease. We've, we've done that over time. If we've seen budget categories, say advertising, that's, you know, out of line for like ZBA, we'll, we'll move to, to reduce that line item so that it's more consistent with the cost of doing business, you know, for that particular commission.
Thank you. Anyone else? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And we're doing fire next? Yep. Fire department? Switching. So, that's page eight.
Good evening, Dave Bromley, fire chief. Thank you for allowing us the time to represent our budget. Kim Calabrese, the fire marshal, wanted to be here tonight, but she had family obligations and couldn't make it. This year, the fire department is celebrating its 130th year of service, and this represents what the big brother is telling your fire department as to what to do for ideas. The federal department of, the fire department instructors commission is all these books that are going on, as well as something came out in January from OSHA, the 1910-156 Emergency Responsible, which is going to change the way the fire departments act, train and are how they work at fire scenes. The fire department administration is made up of a fire chief part-time, deputy fire chief part-time, fire marshal full-time, deputy fire marshal part-time, and a full-time administrative assistant, along with volunteers who have served since May 8th of 1894. We have an allowance of 120 that we can have. Our current membership is at 84, 10 more than last year, and we had 56 members, which are certified EMS responders, six more than last year. Our recruitment drive that we just had really worked out for us, and we hope to get more. We had a department surgeon who recently retired, and we have two department chaplains. Seventy-five percent of the nation's firefighters are volunteers. This is an estimated savings to Watertown of $5.5 million annual cost versus career, that with the response your town volunteers give, many residents believe they have a full-time fire department. We have two stations, one on Main Street, one on Buckingham Street, four engines, one tanker, two aerial ladders, one rescue, a utility brush truck, three EMS vehicles, one utility rehab vehicle, three command cars, two fire marshal cars, ATV, two trailers, a rescue boat and an ice rescue boat, which are always ready to respond. Currently, we have engine one, which is out of service and being referred, being built at Galvez and Knights, which is due for delivery sometime this early summer. Your fire department performs rescue, fire, medical. Members train online and in person, and in 2023, the members logged over 2,600 hours of volunteer training. Fire department and fire marshal's office visit each daycare, preschool, grammar school and parochial school each year during October Fire Prevention Month. The department also hosts an open house for the public to learn about fire prevention and how the department performs and distributes smoke detectors that is needed. These are pictures of some of the incidents along our Main Street. The Watertown Fire Department responded to 3,083 fire EMS and rescue, EMS calls in 2023, an increase of 101 incidents during, from 19, from 2022. This is a big item out for us, the apparatus replacement fund. The department requests funding annually from 150, changed to 200,000. This fund allows the town to replace fire apparatus on a 25-year replacement schedule per NFPA guidelines. This fund saves the town thousands of dollars in bonding and interest costs. Past years of non-funding and cost increases has caused delays in the replacement plan. The current account holds $926,507, with 772,735 of that fund approved in fiscal year 2022, 23 for the bid purchase of engine one due this summer, leaving a balance of 153,772. Ladder two, which you bonded last year for 1.5 million, was, the cost was 1.77 million, which left a shortage of 201,951,000. With that balance due on delivery and using that money from the balance replacement fund, ladder two will be delivered in September of 2025, so with funding of 200,000 in next two fiscal cycles, there would be approximately 351,821 remaining in the fund after paying off ladder two to begin funding replacement or rescue 10. As a picture of rescue 10, rescue 10 is a 2,000 Spartan chassis rescue, medium rescue. Based on annual funding and replacement costs, the replacement cost today is estimated at 900,000, making delivery of new rescue 10 during the 28, 29 fiscal year, if the fund is fully funded each year towards the cost, not, cost not increasing. At that point, rescue 10 will be 29 years old, four years past its due date to be replaced. This is the synopsis of our current budget request. On page seven, if you're following the book, an increase of $15,000 for the fire marshal for salary pay scale comparison adjustment. The fire chief and the fire marshal currently are not paid, are paid on a lower scale with comparisons to other towns, and we'll see those comparisons later. So, the difference is a 20, 20.5% increase in the 24, 25 fiscal year for that line item. Page eight, deputy fire chief to equal hourly pay of the deputy fire marshal, which should have been done when the, when the deputy fire marshal was hired, is an 8.8% increase. Page eight, a $15,000 increase for fire chief for salary pay comparison adjustment, a 24.5% increase. Page eight, $10,302 increase hours for chief to be full-time, which is another five hours per week, $10,302, which is a 16.5% increase. Page eight, $200, $250 increase for reference materials. This is for the materials used by the fire marshal's office as well as the fire department for training, a 33.5% increase. Page eight, $5,000 increase to the Lo Sap 401 Plan for firefighters. If you're not familiar with the plan, this is what we pay for our firefighters if, during the Lo Sap, it's an awards program. If you meet the program needs, you get a 401 at the end of the year. My goal with that is to get it to hopefully $2,000 a year for the firefighters, which equals what most towns are giving for tax relief. That would be a 6.7% increase. Page eight, $1,150 increase for annual host testing. This is the host testing annually that's needed per NFPA rules. Page eight, $10,000 increase in medical services, recruit and annual physicals. Unfortunately, this year, our doctor retired who did our physicals, and he was doing it at a pretty gut rate. We now got a new doctor, but the rate's higher, so that's the increase of that 83.5%. $32,000 increase for scheduled replacement of EMS 7, which is a rescue vehicle. We replace them every four years, and they roll down into the next, you know, we have three EMS vehicles, so the other, oldest one is 12 years old. And that is a, bought on a lease purchase agreement for three years, so it's 32,000 for three years each. $4,000 increase in maintenance, not buildings. This is testing for our aerials, our pumps and our ladders, as well as SCBA, 36.5% increase. A $4,000 increase in parts, equipment and repairs for tools, meters and extinguishers, as well as tires, 66, excuse me, 66.7%. And page nine, $2,000 medical supplies increase, oxygen refills, gloves, masks, a 16.7% increase. Our oxygen tanks, which we just had our vendor retire due to cost problems they had, we're filling our tanks for $4 a tank. were filling our tanks for $4 a tank, and when we went to the new vendor, it's $7.50 a tank. The pay scale for Fire Marshal and Fire Chief, which averages $15,000 less than the bottom line of the current pay scales of similar towns and departments within Watertown, that allowing the adjustment and only bring would only bring the Fire Marshal and Fire Chief to the low end of the pay scale, and should be continually monitored for future budget cycles. The change to full-time Fire Chief was which was recommended by Chief Black in 2018 upon announcing his retirement, and there's an attachment for that, has become more apparent with the changes in the fire service reporting networks and the incident increased workload of managing and protecting the 84 volunteer members and the citizens of our town, along with the upcoming enactment of OSHA 1910-156 Emergency Response Rule, which will change the way the fire service trains and performs. The asterisks are the items that the town manager has cut. The full-time Fire Chief position he had cut, and the $2,000 increase for the medical supplies was cut. Comparing your 2023-24 budget to the 24-25 budget is an increase of 101,716, a 9.64% increase. Next slide. Here you see the municipalities that were checked for the Fire Marshal job. At the bottom, you see the current Fire Marshal's pay is 73,291. The next one is high closest to that, the lowest close one is 80,000, 84,000, 88,000. So we both are low in the comparisons of pay scales with all the departments making us competitive, non-competitive. The Fire Chief's schedule is the same. Those are full-time departments. Some of them, the Farmington Department, he's the public safety officer as well as the Fire Marshal. In Guilford, he's the Fire Chief and Marshal. And you see it down, 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 down the line. Like I said, I'm a 30-hour chief, 35 hours in the town of Watertown is full-time. Right now, I'm at 66, 821, and requesting it to go to 88,000 and change to be full-time. Next slide. This is the pay comparison that was written by Chief Black upon his retirement back in February of 2018. At that time, the administrative assistance pay was lowered because there was a new administrative assistant. The Deputy Fire Marshal, which was two part-time marshals, was brought down to he was increasing it to one part-time marshal at 15 hours. Fire Chief and Fire Marshal, which Larry Black was, was 116,601, but he was filling both positions as Marshal and Fire Chief at a rate of 60 hours a week is what he was working. Deputy Chief was requested at that by him to be at 10 hours and with an increase, and then he advised that the Chief and Marshal should be at equal pay at 35 hours a week, being both full-time. And at that time, the pay scale from the fiscal year 2017 to 2018 to 2018, 2019 was a little bit less than the previous year. Watertown Fire Mass Services continually serve the town of Watertown and Oakville and those that pass through with members putting themselves in harm's way daily. They respond to fire, medical, emergency incidents, and treat residents who are still testing positive for COVID-19 and other diseases. The Deputy Fire Chief, Fire Marshal, and I have presented a responsible budget request. The Fire Department last year, 2023-24, was asked for a zero increase, as all departments were, which the Fire Department not only did, but was the only department with a zero increase last year, and also reduced our budget by another 5,000 in an effort to help the town financially, which delayed some of our projects. There were most projects completed, and a budget presented that is fiscally responsible to Deputy Chief, Fire Marshal, and I make this budget work, and we'll ask and ask the town that Green State, the town managers cut to the full-time Fire Chief position of 10,302 and the $2,000 in medical supplies, and ask for no further cuts to be made. The Watertown Fire Department stands ready day and night. Thank you. You have any questions?
There any questions or comments?
Um, thank you. And I I do want to say thank you to all the volunteers in the department. I had a question regarding the Apparatus Replacement Fund. There's that 25-year replacement schedule per NFPA guidelines?
Yeah, the National Fire Protection Association.
If we extend beyond that, like that vehicle that will go to 29 years, is there any sort of insurance effect?
There's not insurance effects, but there's issues if something were to happen and someone got hurt, NFPA would step in and say they would probably come out with a fine or something. So that's their recommendation, but and nothing happens with their recommendation. They don't force you to do it until something happens. If something were to happen, they go, we told you.
Thank you.
Um, where in the budget book is the?
Yeah, I couldn't find it either.
Do you know? And then a better question is, is the 150 in there or is the 200,000?
We asked, it's 200 in the book for this year.
You left it at 200, okay. Yeah, I don't know the page, but is that 200?
Sue's put it there.
Yeah, he said a couple of those. Oh, good.
Sorry. I had a question about where you have on the asterisks, the increase hours for Fire Chief to full-time and the medical supplies increase. You said with the asterisks that both of those were adjusted or cut by the town manager?
Correct. The town manager cut the full-time position of the 10,302, and he reduced the 2,000 for the medical supplies back to the 12,000.
Oh, there it is. I was, I think I was reading it backwards. Okay. All right, I just couldn't find it. Okay, thank you.
Anyone else?
I know the Emergency Manager Director and his deputy, is that the positions that's being advertised right now?
Correct.
At town, okay. Is that for both positions or just the one?
That's just the one emergency managed position. That was a position I took back when I was a police officer, back in 2012, when Dave Hart had the position, and he resigned, and I took it over and kept it going. But it's just become too cumbersome and too too much work for two positions. So I needed to clear my desk with that position.
And what's the the Northwest Public Safety? Was that?
That's the annual service for our med channels. We have med control with Waterbury Hospital. So if we were needing to talk to a doctor from a scene, we have to use the EMS radio, and that's their stipend that they get annually for our use of that radio.
And there it says building maintenance is $7,500. I thought the building, the buildings were under public buildings.
Correct. They, was it last year or the year before? Last year, they decided to put some money away to the department has to use for themselves to to work on the building. And that was stuff that, you know, so if emergencies, emergency happened, we had money in the budget to cover the costs of things like that. Last year, we used it for a deep clean of both firehouses because of the COVID. So we did a deep clean of both firehouses. This year, we're changing locks. We have some lock issues and some door issues that are going on, so.
And the last question is, it says utilities and electric. It says, it's only like $900, it says, for electric, is that electric, not the electric bill, but I'm not sure what it means by electric or utilities.
Which one is that?
It's just, it's right under, it says Personnel Services with the the last two items, utilities and telephone.
That's for our telephone services and our public utilities. What it is, is we pay for the sirens that are on the poles, as well as the radio communications at Judd Farm. We have to pay the electric to Judd Farm for the use of the electricity up there.
Okay. And then on the telephone part, isn't there a thing where we have to, the town has to start worrying about who's going to maintain their systems, the phone systems?
There's talk now with the IT Department, working on changing our phone system. Our phone system at the firehouse now is antiquated and old. As the as these headsets break, they don't have replacements for them. So there's a plan in place to start working on changing our phone system.
Okay, that's it.
Chief, I I I don't have a question on your budget. I just want to say thank you to the men and women of the Watertown Fire Department for the outstanding job that you guys do for our community. The big fire on Saturday, outstanding what you guys ran into, the fire up on Guernsey Town Road. I know you guys are taxed, and I know you could use a bunch more volunteers and, but just thank you for everything that you guys do.
Thank you. I mean, my men worked hard, men and women worked hard at the Guernsey Town Road Fire. We had seven dogs that were trapped in the house, five were rescued. The Deputy Chief himself went in there with flames over his head to drag those cages out, and we were doing CPR and resuscitating dogs on the front lawn. It was amazing what the guys did and how they brought back. Two dogs were brought back to life, one succumbed right on the scene, and I believe a couple more have passed since then. But all in all, there's four dogs that have survived.
One last question. I know in years past, your the volunteer membership was kind of declining, and it seems like this year you had a nice increase.
Correct.
What types of things did you change to, you know, try to?
We had a big publicity charge. We put out signs all around town. We put advertisements in the newspapers, advertisements in the Town Times, did a social media push, and we ended up getting 16 new members from that push that we did.
Thank you.
Could I ask one more? Mark, maybe you know the answer to this question, and I, I, maybe I'm just not finding it. But where is that $200,000 line item for the Vehicle Replacement Fund?
It's somewhere else. It's not in there.
Oh, it's, okay. It's just not in the Fire Department section?
No.
Okay, okay, that's fine. I just, I just wanted to make sure I wasn't not seeing it. Okay, all right, thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And moving on to Water and Sewer Departments.
Is that 16 or 60? 16 on six.
That's a different book.
Thank you for having us here tonight. Jerry Lukowski, Director of Public Works. We're here tonight for the Water and Sewer Budget. It's one of the largest budgets with line items in the town with about 500 out of 14 fund sites. Primarily, it's water sewer revenue and debt. There's this two topics I want to touch on on water and one on sewer, and then I'm going to turn it over to Dave McMahon, our Assistant Superintendent for Water and Sewer. So the two topics on water that you're going to hear tonight is LCIR, Lead and Copper Improvements. It's a federal and state mandate. It's an inventory that has to be completed by October 1 of this year, and which we have done. And basically, it's to switch over all the lead and copper services that we have to our residents. Dave will have more of the details in his briefing. This is a result of what happened in Flint, Michigan, if you follow the news about five to seven years ago with their water, with their lead and copper. The second topic on water, I just want to hit the 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 top points, is our interconnection with another water service. Our current single water main, and this was an issue I brought up last year, is 36 inches, and it was installed 80 years ago. And that's the only water main that we have servicing Watertown, and it probably provides about 25% to Waterbury. But they have two other redundant water pipes. They have a total of three. It's seven miles in length, and it was one of my stress points when we were doing the Wolfson Street Bridge, and we're still not done yet because we have to put the pavement down, and we're not going to vibrate the road. We're just going to roll it many times in order to get that compaction rate. We have three possible locations to tie in that Dave's going to talk with his briefing, two other than Waterbury and one with Waterbury, so we could have a redundant part of our system. We only have two days worth of supply in our tanks. If that water line ever was able to break, that runs down Main Street. That's the two on water. The one on sewer is INI. It's inflow and infiltration. It's basically stormwater that's entering the sanitary system, and that we're paying for it. This year was a record year. You're probably going to hear a repeat on Monday night when I talk about stormwater at the Public Works briefing. Both INI and lead and copper, it's a multi-year fix, and you'll see the reason why. The other part I just wanted to talk about is Water and Sewer Authority did see this budget when it was in process, and it was still in process after the last meeting we had with Water and Sewer Authority. Jim Sugden is here tonight. He's the chairman for Water and Sewer. And I'd also like to thank our folks in the back of the room who run our field operations and also our office operations from Water and Sewer. Lastly, I'd like to introduce Dave McMahon. Most of you probably know him. He has 40 years of water and sewer experience, primarily with the MDC and other water and sewer companies across New England. He's going to have 20 minutes, and then at the end, we could come back into the slides if you want to have detailed questions on each of the budget line items. Dave's been with Watertown for nine months, and I've been with Watertown for 16 months. Dave?
Thank you, Jerry. Thank you, council members. Thank you, Mark. Thank you, Sue. So the goal of the, the whole background in this implementation of the So the focus on this is improving the infrastructure and the equipment in an efficient manner, utilizing the best practices approach that minimizes the impacts and effects to the WSA customers by keeping costs down and in line with town goals and objectives, with an emphasis on exceeding customer expectations. Waterbury is the issue with the ongoing litigation, the current and future billing rates and proposed projects that involve Waterbury infrastructure. The implementation of proposed rate study recommendations, I want to touch base on a lot with the drinking water and clean water SRF funding projects that will be designed to correct the deficiencies within the sewer collection and water distribution system. So it's an 80/20 match, so being aggressive on putting in applications. So there's numerous projects going forward, and it's a question of, depending on the complexity of the project, the state takes roughly between four and 10 months to review a project. So I'm putting forth, you know, 10 or 12 projects and get the order of ranking, and hopefully they all get approved. So it's a question of, we meet the criteria, so we get 25% for being a small public system for under 10,000 customers, and then we also get an additional 25% because we meet the criteria of the DCI ranking system. So on the, this slide, we talk about what, how much water we bought from just last year, fiscal year '23. So we paid 1.36 million for the amount of water. And on the sewer side, we paid 4.62 million roughly, so that's a difference of 3.26. So during my presentation, mostly I'm going to be emphasizing that figure, and then on the next slide is the, it brings into light a big deficiency that we have in the system. So if we bring in 249.7 million gallons of water, but we send 875.72 water to, for sewage disposal and treatment, the fire district's portion of that, 875.72, was 291.82 million gallons. So the total amount of the INI inflow and infiltration was 526.55 million gallons that we paid Waterbury to treat groundwater. So the focus is to, is on the elimination of that, last year was 526. So that was a wet year, but that's the goal of my budget and my presentation. I need to stop that much money being spent for water that's not sewage. And then the middle talks about what INI is. So it's from illegal sump pumps, footing drains, gutters, yard drains, damaged piping on sewer mains and homeowner house connections laterals, and then the manhole structures and covers. The big portion of structures and covers. The big portion of what I want to talk about on the last paragraph is the implementation of a manhole tray installation project. That's the first step. It's the cheapest step. So not every manhole has a hole. Some manholes have one, some have four or five, some have none. So I want to put these trays in there. That will prevent the rainwater draining the road from rain and snow melt from entering the sewer collection system. So that's the first initial project that I want to do. Frank, can you help me on, can you do the video on the first one, please? So the first slide on the left, that's the normal Mattoon Flow Channel, the flow during normal non-rain events and snow melt. That's the normal flow. That's what it's supposed to look like. So you see the concrete and then you see the block. So the next video in the middle shows you how high the inflow to that chamber is. So hydraulically, that much water is backed up throughout the whole system, but our pump stations are still pumping because it doesn't know that the pipes are full. The third slide is the Mattoon Road flooding during this particular rain event. So needless to say, that much INI is going into Waterbury and we're paying for it. So the next slide, I got it from here, Frank. So when I first started, staff told me about different INI issues and so bringing in different vendors. This is an epoxy spray coating that we did on our worst manhole. This is a 15-foot deep manhole and we sprayed it with an epoxy for just under 10,000. There's other vendors that we've been bringing in because I need the passing of this budget and then the process, the approval from state deep to get the funding to correct the INI problem. So on the left side of this slide, these are all our pump stations. So on the left side of the slide, that's what normal up and down. So when you see it go up, that's when the pump, the well fills up and then the pump pumps it down. The middle and to the right, that's how much the pump turned on and off just on the 19 and 110 date range. So our largest pump station, in 10 hours and 39 minutes, it turned on and off 54 times. Winding Brook 1, 55 times over 15 hours, 43 minutes. Winding Brook 2, 67 times over 5 hours, 4 minutes. Straits Turnpike, 50 times over 6 hours, 9 minutes. So the INI not only is costing us money, it's, our equipment's taking a beating trying to keep up with rain So this is, you have the seven-year average. So la, you know, so it's, it was 49 for last year, 46 for '22, 69 for last year. If you add January of '24, we had 76 inches of rain. So that goes back to that 3.26 million. That's INI that we're paying for because of how much rain and snow melt we get. So the interconnections on the proposed intermunicipal connections with Connecticut Water. So right now, we have a water main that runs down to the town line by the car wash on Straits Turnpike. Connecticut Water, the orange line at the bottom, Park Road. So we would run 4,900 feet between a combination of funding through the state and with Connecticut Water if we choose that route to have that redundancy service.
Cumberland Farms. That's where Cumberland Farms is located at, Middlebury, on the bottom right-hand corner, up to our town line at the car wash.
So then, Park, Connecticut Water has from Straits Park Road extension up the Three Mile Road. So it would be a question of, in their property in Middlebury, that yellow 4,950 to get it to the town line and then another 5,550 to get it from the town line up to Bunker Hill. Now, the reason I would propose the second line is it's the same issue with Waterbury. We only have the one line. If something should have happened to that 4,900-foot run and we don't have any other source, we would be without water and it would be, you know, we have less than two days of water capacity if we should lose that line. So that would be the redundancy on that side of town. The other side of town, so our Park Road at Jericho, I would propose run 5,000 feet from that intersection down to Route 6 and then it would be a question of where would Connecticut Water allow us to tie into? Would we have to go all the way to Reynolds Bridge Road or to the nearest connection where the, it's some type of DOT or deep maintenance garage is where their main is. Those purple pinkish lines, those are the low-service line and the high-service for Waterbury. So now talking with the, this is the part of the presentation that talks about the interconnection with Waterbury as a redundancy. This would be, so the slide on the left says bring the pump station and then run it up to our tank up by Crystal Rock on Buckingham. The slide on the right is a blow-up of where the bus facility is by Route 8 and the Noggett Tuck Greenway and the Noggett Tuck River and then Thomaston Road. So I would tie into the 39-inch is the first one and then I would also tie into the 42-inch on Thomaston Road and then pump it up the road. That's a redundancy here again. If something should happen to the 36, we still have two other sources to tie off to still maintain normal operations on water usage. Fern Hill, I want to put forth a project to Deep, DPH and Waterbury. So when they install, when they built Fern Hill in the Scoville tank, they, I would have installed a 36-inch butterfly valve after that service connection. This way, anything that happens downstream after Fern Hill, you would be able to isolate that valve right there and then we would still be able to utilize Fern Hill Pump Station to feed our system to maintain water. Obviously, if something happened upstream from Fern Hill, you know, there's nothing we can do except on that other project, tie into that 39 and the 42 down on Echo Road. The next thing is, I just want to bring up on my presentation, because of the amount of budget funds, there's duplication of titles and matches because one side's on one side of the water side of the house and then the other one's on the sewer side of the house. So my slides show the duplicate titles, line items, just with the different funds next to it. So the, this is the overall, the seven budgets broken down to the revenue side and the expense side. So physical year 23, 24 was 5.57 million. I'm proposing 9.6, 9.6, which is a 72.4% increase, but that's an estimation on the revenue side. So it's not cast in stone that that's what we're going to get. It all depends on usage and other things. So the difference is 4.03 million. On the expense side, last year it was 5.87. I'm proposing 7.87. That's an increase of 34.19%, which is 2 million increase. So the overall budget increase that I'm asking for and looking for is based on the previous slides and the amount of projects that I want to put forth to Deep and DPH. And that increase is 14.84. The next slide, I broke it down in a sense. So the top two lines, sewer disposal. Last year, we paid Waterbury 1 million, recommend, you know, and then this year I'm proposing 1.25. That's a 25% increase. The utility water is how much we paid for the water that we got from Waterbury, 800,000. I'm increasing that to 1 million. That's a 25% increase. Then the increase in rates on the electric, propane, gasoline and lab, those are all items that, in a sense, I have no control. The lab services, our vendor, due to PFOS and other requirements by Deep and, I mean, DPH and EPA, the amount of sampling and the type of sampling, that's what the increase is for. The reason 15, the top lab sample line went from 1,000 to 10,000 was it was being underfunded. So I evened it out to 10,000 on both sides of the house. So that's why it's a 900% increase. The next section is more what our transfers and stuff for the different funds. So they are what they are on what we have to do for debt and capital and extensions and stuff like that. This slide has a lot of information, but it's, I wanted you, everybody to see, these are all the positions within WSA and that's why they're duplicated. So the superintendent position, we plan to fill. We want to idle the assistant superintendent position. I need to request that a chief maintainer position be created, a business analyst position be created, then the, you know, the supervisor, the controller, the office manager and the bookkeeper. The office manager and bookkeeper 2 all fall under the controller as one position. So there is, those are going to be eliminated. The admin assistant is the bookkeeper 1, utility maintainer 2. The increase of the 51.65 on that is based on the utility 1 maintainer that I have now met the criteria of the UM 2. So by the time this budget hopefully is approved, he'll be a UM 2 and that's why the budget increases that much. And then that's where I'm showing the UM 1 with the decrease of the 85.11% decrease. The engineering tech 1 position duty all these projects and then us having to pay town employees and Jerry's era engineering group for services for GIS, survey work and other things that have to do with normal operation and then some of these projects are going to involve. So like the LCI has a portion of the lead services will have to be put into a GIS and then put on the website for everybody to see once it gets to that point of the project. So those costs, we have to pay for those services. The part-time inspector, same thing. We have to monitor these projects as they go on. The big increase for the custodian is it was leveled out at 1,500. I brought it up to what he currently makes plus the raise that they just got. So that's why it shows the 40.67% increase. But back to the two positions that I need created, the basis for those is the recommendations or proposed recommendations. Now, the rate study isn't done yet, but I'm anticipating certain things may occur like monthly billing. So the increase in what we do operationally and administratively wise, I need another position. On fourth, other projects that I'm putting forth, that's why I need a chief maintainer to add, to take care of the workload that's going to be created on my budget on what I want to implement. So those are the reasons for that. The next slide is crunched with a lot of stuff here again. All the things in blue are proposed projects. The top four or the top two items are the vehicle replacement. So the Ford Fusion van sedan, we want to replace it. So it's a question of what do we get? So that's why the increase of, I'm asking for 25,000 on each side. And then on the Ford Transit, I'm looking to get a vehicle that's proper for what we need. So I need a large enough truck with a utility body, a crane, a compressor, a generator to do the operational work that the Transit was more for meter reading. So as we go to an automated meter infrastructure type of system, the Transit is, we can't use it because it doesn't go into our operations. The next item is the inflow, infiltration and inflow. So the second line item under that is, the first one was already an existing item. So it was approved for 5,000 last year, but the deficiencies within the INI issue, that's why I'm increasing it to 50,000 plus asking for the state to put forth the numerous projects to address INI. So I'm asking for 80,000 on that. So the Falls, Frederick and Falls Terrace Water Main Extension, that's just to finish the project. So I need the 75,000 because of 24 money for materials and labor. The replacement of the 2-inch water main, galvanized mains with 6-inch. So galvanized is considered lead. We have to replace all of that. So I want to start, we have two streets right off the get-go that we need to put forth. Those are also applications going to DPH. The water meter AMI for both water and sewer side, I'm asking for 70,000 on both line items. That's a project, that's for the accuracy on the water side and we need to get that under control on the water side and the sewer side. So we know exactly what we're paying and what we're being billed for. The bunker hill is just 550 feet. That's the redundancy that we need. Right now, if we have a water main break in a certain area on State Street or State, Straits Turnpike, a lot of commercial and then fucking, Bunker Hill and Concord and Lexington will all be out of, without water because it's not tied in.
You're more than halfway into it.
Hmm?
You gotta...
So the majority of these projects are all going to DPH or Deep to improve the system and...
And what's the percent funding that we're looking at from them? Each one's different.
Each one's different and it depends on what the total cost of the project is.
And some of this from the past, we never went after the state money in the water and sewer with the 50/50 funding or the 80/20, no, no interest or low-interest loans. This is, I think, a first that we're chasing this funding. So we basically have to show all these projects in order to have them registered and to go... We could stay on the slide, Joe. I didn't want to cut Dave off, but I know there's a lot on here, but I know we only have so much time to get through the briefing if you just...
Sorry. So then the rest of the operations is, you know, just increases in materials or operational. Line items, certain line items, so like the sewer maintenance line item, that 35,000 is a couple of line items created or combined to do that one. The IT, now that we're responsible for our IT equipment and software and other licensing issues, so that has to be shown on our budget now. And then the rest is operational and increases in certain licenses and fees and maintenance. The slides, as they go down, our quantity is, dollar-wise is down. So pretty much, so even on the decline side, even though it shows a decline and it's still an active line item, it's because I combined line items up above. And then the ones with the X on the bottom, those will be eliminated because I combined them. So basically, all the facilities need security cameras, security fencing. Yes, we have fencing at some of our facilities, but some we don't. So just to stay with the protocols and the requirements of the fencing and cameras, that's what they're all put forth. So basically, the goal of this budget, again, for this budget and future budget is to provide the customer service through innovation and technology by proving the efficiencies in the equipment that is not efficient by working with Connecticut State and federal agencies to utilize and obtain funding and grants to improve the infrastructure assets for future generations. These projects are an important factor and the WSA personnel have shown what hard work can accomplish for Watertown and to the customers we serve. I want to thank the WSA staff, Michelle, Karen, Jen, Mike, Jerry, Antonio, Nathan, the water sewer... the Water Sewer Authority Board, Town Manager Mark Ramo, Director of Finance Sue, and Assistant Director Megan, for their support of this WSA budget and to the town council. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, before you ask questions, may I make a short statement? Jerry probably wants, Jerry and Dave probably want to strangle me because we've been back and forth over this presentation. Just to lead you down the road of the vetting pieces that we put in place to understand this budget, this is a lot of information to take in. I know when I was, I sat there in the first briefing, I was like, oh, my God, the council's going to have a heart attack when they see this because it is overwhelming. But we've met several times to go over this presentation. I sat with the Water and Sewer Authority before their last vote on this budget to pass it to the town council. It has been vetted by the Water and Sewer Authority that they fully support Dave. I fully support Dave and his plans. We have some important decisions that we have to consider with the litigation that we have with Waterbury. Dave's plan addresses some of the infiltration of the water that's entering into our system, and it's a plan to kind of reduce that amount of water so that we could pass on those savings to the rate payers. It also allows for redundancy, which takes the reliance of us from being with the city of Waterbury. Right now, it's, they're really our only source to get water. This opens us up to be more competitive to actually go to another vendor to get this water. Sewer, we're kind of committed with Waterbury. We don't have many options, and we have no ability to put our own sewer treatment plan in. So there was a vetting process of that. I hope you ask as many questions as you can, but if you're overwhelmed, I certainly understand because I know the first time I saw this and listened to it, it was overwhelming. I just wanted to make sure you're aware that this was vetted through me, it was vetted through Jerry, and the Water and Sewer Authority fully endorsed this budget to move it forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have any questions? Gary?
On, where you had like the bunker hill extension and Route Six extensions, I think Route Six was twenty-three, three hundred feet. How far out, would that bring you out to like to the VFW or hard road?
The twenty-three hundred feet bring you to the right, EverSource right-of-way.
Oh, okay.
So the goal for that project is, that's a multi-phase project where I would go to twenty-three hundred feet up to the easement right-of-way for EverSource, and then up the right-of-way to Jericho and Nova Scotia, tie into Park Road to, for the resiliency of the system. We were petitioned by one of the owners at, on Thomaston. He wanted six hundred feet of water main. So if we're going to hire an engineering and we're, we looked at it, and it's complicated. One, it's a state road. So we want to, if I'm going to go through the process of that, I put forth the project to DPH for the twenty-three hundred feet, for the eighty-twenty funding.
Now, who, who monitors all your cameras now? Anybody, does the town monitor, or do you have a...
We don't have any.
Oh, you don't have any? Who do you, who do you plan on, would it be our, would it be our dispatch center, or would you have a security firm or something?
One, I got to hire a consultant first on that aspect.
Yeah.
And then it's a figure, how do we tie it in IT-wise? And then down the road, you will see a better presentation once we figure out where and how many cameras we're going to get.
The critical part is, we don't even look at our water source tanks. If anybody's up there, we don't know it.
Right.
And the technology has like motion sensors where it could be right in our office, an office and a blank screen, something, you know, comes on. Or we get notified as a text that there's movement at the water station, you know, look, look at the camera system.
Yeah.
Compared to old school, that the security guard's just looking at a camera and, you know, the new technology has it, so motion gets sensed, you get notified, it pops up on the screen.
The page in your presentation with a lot of the different projects, the costs that are listed, is that just design costs?
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Those are just design costs.
Okay. And those...
Sorry to cut you off. So in order to get that eighty-twenty funding or, you know, approval of a grant, there's certain steps that we have to do to get the approval process. So you have to do the initial step. Part of that is the application and hiring a consultant to design what we're asking for.
And public health or DEP wants to see if you have funding, because you're going to start with the towns or water systems that show that they have funding for it, or you don't really apply for the, for the grant.
No, they, 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 they'll look more at a municipality that has the funding in place because they want to spend their time reviewing a project and approving a project that is going to be ready to go.
Through the chair. Dave, very good presentation. It did appear at first to be overwhelming. Well explained by you, reiterated by the town manager, and this definitely could be reactive mode, not the right word for it, mode, if the worst-case scenario occurs, that if we lose that one source of Waterbury from Waterbury, which could end up being the case, there should be an option in this plan foreseen by yourself and Jerry with funding eighty, twenty, fifty, fifty. Thank you.
Thank you.
Richard?
I would reiterate, thank you for an excellent presentation. I both feel a lot better about what I was thinking or my questions going into it, but it is definitely still a lot of so much new information for me that it is, it is a little bit overwhelming, but you clearly are an expert, and so I was very impressed. Could you just remind me with the INI, how much money do you think we could save by making the updates that you're talking about?
Because it's a multi-year project, so just last year, that three-point-two-six million worth of INI that we spent for nothing and for groundwater. Depending on the season, how wet it is, it's a question of how much we pay. So if we happen to have the same wet year as last year, just figure we're going to be paying that same three-point-two-six million that we could be investing in the infrastructure.
Okay, that makes sense. Okay, that's what I thought. And then you mentioned something about lead pipes, and I just wanted to, is that an issue in town in terms of, do we have lead pipes as a problem? And so is there state funding for that? It just...
Yes. So after the Flint, Michigan incident, that became apparent that EPA needed to put out some guidance. So the latest guidance is the LCI, which is the lead and copper rule improvement. So the inventory has to be completed by October twenty-four for all the utilities within Connecticut for DPH requirement. Then it's a question of the other phases of the project. So once the inventory is done, we need to hire a consultant because you have to do the public outreach, the inventory, how you're going to determine, so anything that's unknown. So if we have poor records on certain addresses, we don't know what's on the owner's side or what's on our side, we have to basically dig it up to determine what it is. So anything that's unknown, DPH is requiring XYZ amount. So in my presentation, I just used fifteen hundred as an example out of the forty-two, ten customers that we have. Is it fifteen hundred? I don't think so, but it could be. So that is a project that is going to be going through DPH and the eighty-twenty funding. They know that it's a critical factor to get the lead out. So the galvanized is considered lead. So like I said, some of our streets have two-inch galvanized. So like the Frederick Street job, that had two-inch galvanized. So we've already replaced a portion of it. I just want to continue that main. And then there's several other streets that are critical that we've been having waterman leaks on. So it's a question of, besides the LCI, the galvanized services, two-inch need to be updated to six-inch.
So the water is tested, right? It's not as if...
Yes, we have the water tested weekly.
Okay. Is it possible that a homeowner would have pipes going to their house, like through their yard? That could cause lead to be in their drinking water in their house, but it wouldn't...
Depends on what was installed at the time.
Yeah.
So if we have poor records, you know, the goal is both the utility side needs to be replaced for lead and then the customer side.
Okay, okay. And the question with the cameras, I think maybe you mentioned this, but I might have missed it. Is this a requirement now, or obviously just like a best practice?
It's a state and federal mandate.
Okay, it is, yeah.
So for the inventory, it's due October twenty-four. If it's determined, you have to replace all the lead within ten years. Obviously, if it's a larger system, like we wouldn't have a problem, I don't think, doing it in ten years. But that's where I put in the presentation, right now in twenty-four money, it, I just used the median number of eighteen thousand five hundred, or no, fifteen thousand. So if I replaced fifteen hundred services, that's twenty-two million dollars. No utility has that, so that's why they spread it out over the ten years. But if you have a lot more than that, I believe the state, as long as you're progressing to replace them, they're going to allow you to go past that ten-year period.
Okay, so I'm sorry, you were talking about the, the lead is mandated by the state and federal government? Okay. Oh, I was asking about the cameras.
The cameras. It's a recommendation, it's not mandated.
Recommendation, yeah.
But it's, we'll say they hint towards that you should.
Yeah. Yeah, that makes sense. And then, I'm sorry, one other question about the, so, so your budget, and you don't, you don't obviously know all the revenue, but you're talking about it's about a four million dollar increase? Is that, did I understand that correctly?
On the revenue side?
No, no, I mean, the difference between revenue and expenditures is that you're four million short? Am I, did I not get that?
On your revenue and expense kind of summary page, your revenue is going from roughly five-point-six million to nine-point-six million?
Right. That's an estimate based on the rate increase that we've already proposed and what may be in the rate study recommendations. So those are just estimated figures.
To get to that estimate, is there an estimated increase in our water and sewer rates that would get us there? Is that a number that you're able to share?
So back in October twenty-three, we've already increased the thirty and thirty-five percent on the water and sewer side. The rate study is going to tell us based on what, you know, it, it's all predicated on the litigation, on whether we have to pay whatever rate, but it's a question of the increase in the budget and the proposed rate that may be occurring in July, that's what the increase is of the, to bring it to four million.
So just based on these estimates here, the increase could be as high as seventy percent? Is that what this is telling me?
Yeah.
It's saying the revenue's going up by seventy-two point four percent?
Yes.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Do we have an anticipated timeframe when that rate study may be complete?
Well, we thought it was going to be done the first, the beginning of February, but they're still working on it. So I'm hoping within a month or two, it should be done prior to the budget implementation.
And another question. It's an awful lot of projects laid out there, potential projects. Is there a plan in place for who will be writing those grant proposals and monitoring deadlines and whatnot?
Well, the criteria set by DEEP and DPH dictates the progress of what has to be submitted and when, and it's a question of, that's what the increase in staff on the business analysts is for, on the increase of, you know, proposed monthly billing, and then the operations and the tracking of these projects for the requirements for DEEP and DPH.
Thank you.
The, the proposed intermunicipal connection with CT Water, could this potentially, could we eliminate Waterbury potentially entirely, or is that just to offset the...
We'll say offset for right now, but it's just to look at the viability of another water source.
Right. So potentially, well, offset, but potential of no longer needing Waterbury for water? Potentially. But not sewer? Sewer would need to stay.
Correct, right. It's my understanding, the way the expired contract is, we don't have to take Waterbury's water, but DEEP required the fire district to close the treatment plant, and during that agreement, it was mentioned that fire district and the WSA could not build a wastewater treatment plant, and that they were going to fund the capital improvement in the Waterbury treatment plant. So they have to take our sewage, but they, we don't have to take their water.
And it's also too, just a basic redundancy of having water if something happened to the line on Main Street.
Sure, sure.
So it's kind of two, two different parts.
No, I understand.
And I know we showed three things, but it's really, even if we did one thing, which for us would be the shortest route, which means Connecticut Water down to Cumberland Farms and Middlebury, we wouldn't, we wouldn't do all three things. We just need at least to get one in place right now to have some redundancy, basic redundancy in, in the system.
On your...
Yeah, I just, if you could just, thirty seconds, I was not a hundred percent on the INI and how that is so high. We're, we're not, we don't, we don't have proper, I mean, that, that's a whole host of different things that are contributing to that.
Correct. So the more rainy season that we have, that's, some pumps, yard drains, gutters, footing drains.
Yeah, but we can't, we can't prevent that from, we can do things to perhaps minimize it.
Yes.
And that's what you're planning?
Yes. And the first part is, one, the manhole trays. So if a street doesn't have storm drainage and the street's flooded, but the manholes have holes in them, so a two-inch hole in a manhole, just one, is thousands of gallons. So some of our manholes have four or five two-inch holes. So you're draining all the water that's on the road. So that comes to a tune just for last year, five-hundred-and-twenty-six-point-five-five million gallons of INI.
So we'd cap that.
It's a multi-year project. You're not, it's...
Meaning capping those...
You cap it underneath. Yeah, we're going to put a tray underneath the manhole cover.
Yeah, so just, we'll deal with the flooding, we'll just, we won't have to, you know, have that.
And then it's a question of addressing, there's certain things that we're not going to be able to prevent, like you're saying, you know, older houses with some pumps and, you know, the gutters and the yard drains and stuff are tied in, but it's a question of working with the customers and trying to figure out how we can eliminate the INI and pay for technically what we purchased.
And it's also broken sanitary sewer line, any of the old clay pipe that's not set right that the water's leaking into. And it's also that, that fourteen-foot manhole was, was by sixteen straights, that the water was basically shooting in and hitting the other side of the manhole on multi-different parts of that fourteen-foot length. So just that one manhole that, and we don't have this map, but we spent ten thousand, but it's probably a year payback or two-year payback to pay for that cost for that one manhole.
Yeah.
We would never get the zero infiltration.
Sure, sure, sure.
It's not a system out there that, that's at zero.
Because of the stuff that's going to be grandfathered, that there's nothing we can do about it. But if we work with the property owners and the customers, there may be alternatives to a collaborative effort to eliminate it.
If, if we do do this project, this significant project, will, do we have to commit to doing it before we get the, like, if we don't get the grant, are we obligate, I mean, obviously, I mean...
I mean, we would fund it through the budget, but is it something where we have to undertake to do it like years prior to receiving the grant, or?
So we actually talked through this, it's going to be, we're going to be in the driver's seat, so they may apply for, say, for 20 projects. As those projects are approved, we will then take, make the choice on, can we fund it? We would have to come back to the council to approve, you know, funding coming out of Water and Sewer. So it's a whole process. We're trying to be proactive because of the significant infiltration of the water. We're trying to be proactive in one, reducing that as best as possible to mitigate the cost, and then additionally, bring in the additional water so that we have options as we move forward through the litigation and, you know, to the end for, a way for us to say to the ratepayer, yes, we, we are working through this, we're doing our best to reduce your costs, and this is all part of the projects. I don't know if that summarizes it enough?
Yeah, I just, I just want to know if we're, you know, if we don't receive that grant, if we would be, somehow we would need to, you know, have contracts signed and present that, you know, after the, after we've already undertaken to do this work, to then apply for the grant, and then if we don't get it, we're obligated under contract with third parties to actually do it. I was curious as to whether?
No, this is going to be a multi-step process.
Yeah, it's a multi-step. It's, there is no contract until after a project is put forth. So once it's in the design phase and I submit that to DPH or DEEP, it's, they still have to approve what is put forth in front of them, and then it's a, it's a back-and-forth thing as it moves forward.
Understood, yeah.
And then once the contract, because on the 80-20, it's, there's a loan component for that 80%, so depending on the size of the project, there's, the documentation on...
It's all, it all goes together with, with the, with the grant? It would all go hand-in-hand?
Right.
Okay.
So the WSA Board, as we go forth on these different projects, so like when I give the initial applications to them, it's going to take them four to 10 months to get back to me, because I'm not the only utility applying. So they come out with a list, so right now, open enrollment for applications started last Friday, I believe it runs till April 5th, but it, it's not, that's a, that's what they wish you to get it in, but they'll take applications all year long. Because if there's money still available, they want, because they have to spend it. They don't want to give it back to the Fed, the government. So they want to do as many projects, but they don't want to waste their time on a project that's not going to get done.
That's not going to get done, yeah, understood. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, may I add one more comment? So, and, you know, Dave is, you know, under his leadership, we talked about succession planning. I mean, we're all of the age, we're not going to be here 20 years, you know, as employees. But with Dave's experience and his leadership, we're setting up the town and the WSA to move forward through proper succession planning. He's training up the individuals that are beneath him in the organization. We're making a lot of changes, so hopefully, we're setting the next generation up for, you know, for success by putting these projects in place. It, it's a big ask, and we're, you know, it's a lot to grasp, but truly, that's the whole thought process behind this. And we've talked through this, and I was honest with Dave, he was honest with me, but I really think after listening to all this, that it's important for us to set the next group of people to come in here to continue to succeed in Watertown.
One more question. On your list of different projects, say, roughly 20 of them, what's the chance that you'll actually be able to design and submit applications for all these different projects in the coming year?
Well, right now, we're in the process, so I just got the document back from DEEP and DPH on an RFQ, which is part of that process. So we're going to be putting that out shortly, hopefully by the end of the month. We're going to have to interview the engineering firms to, we have to get at least three onboard, and then to meet the requirements of all these fundings. And then the money that I'm putting forth is what I estimate I should be able to get a design done to be able to submit it to DPH.
So from the sounds of it, you'll have multiple engineering companies, vendors, consultants helping with all the different projects, so it's not just all one company doing everything? It'll, depending on the bidding and all that, it'll be kind of spread out?
Correct. And then, like I said, between the four- and 10-month process, they're going to review whatever projects, and then it's a question of which ones are our priority. So once they approve it, we'll be able to maneuver which ones we want to take on, because we're not going to be able to do them all. But it's a question of, we'll be able to roll it over because we're following their guidelines.
Once a project is approved, is there any type of timeline or deadline to actually move forward with it?
Yes, on part of the application, you're given an anticipated completion date. So that's part of their review process.
So we submit 20 projects, we pick the top, I don't know, 10 of them that we're going to do, what happens to the other? Do we have to start the application from scratch?
No. There's a three-page rollover document, so once they approve it, it's assigned a number, and then you're able to keep rolling it over until you complete it.
And can I assume we could roll, roll it over for many years?
Well, just to give you an example, the Carvel meter vault on Main Street.
It's been around for a while.
2017, well, so that's the increase on that, is because I'm 24th, I need 24th money to get it done.
Yep.
You know, it's a hazard, and it's unsafe, and it's in a state road. So that's been rolled over. So I, when I first started, I think within the first month, I had to send in the rollover form for it.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you for all that information, it was definitely a benefit to us.
Thank you.
We're done, I guess. York District has marked it now. Mark did that, yeah. Do I have a motion to adjourn? So moved. Good job, Ken.